Oh yea! Oh yea! Oh yea! My lords, my ladies, honored and distinguished guests, the twenty and twenty-five inauguration of the new mayor and city council for the city of Annapolis now begins with Bishop Coats. God bless America!
On behalf of the city of Annapolis, I want to welcome you to this historic and joyful occasion, the inauguration of our newly elected leadership. My name is Bishop Craig Coats, and I have the honor of serving as your master of ceremonies. Because I'm not here in my pastoral capacity, you don't get in one hour service today. But today, we have come together as neighbors, as partners, as citizens committed to the shared future of our great city. And we want to thank you all for being here to witness this peaceful and purposeful transition of leadership. We are grateful for each public servant, community advocate, and guest who has joined us. And today, I would ask if you will, for a moment, join me in recognizing our distinguished leadership that have come to celebrate with us today, and if you would hold your applause and tell I've acknowledged all of the names. Senator Chris Van Hollen, Senator Angela Alsobrooks, if you would stand, Congresswoman Sarah Alfred, Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller, Comptroller Brooke Learman, State Senator Shanika Henson, Delegate Dana Jones, Delegate Dylan Baylor, County Executive Stuart Pittman, Mayor Gavin Buckley, Lieutenant General Borg Schulte, Superintendent of the United States Naval Academy. Let's give them a big, wonderful applause. Your presence affirms the strength of democracy in our city, our state, and our nation. Thank you. At this time, I have the wonderful pleasure of introducing our first distinguished guest who has been a steadfast advocate in Maryland and a champion for our communities. Please join me in welcoming United States Senator Chris Van Hollen.
How's everybody feeling today?
Woo!
It's a very exciting day here in Annapolis, a special day in this very historic city. The swearing-in of a new city council and the swearing-in of the 138th mayor of Annapolis. Congratulations to all of you for being entrusted by the people of Annapolis to make decisions that will shape the future of this great city and all its residents. It's an awesome responsibility. Before I talk about the future, I do want to salute the outgoing council and the outgoing mayor, Mayor Buckley. Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor. It has been an honor to partner with you in so many ways in support of this city. I want to thank you and Julie for your dedicated service, and to the new council and to the new mayor. I can promise that Senator Alsobrooks, who's here with me, Congresswoman Alfred, who you'll hear from in a moment, we promise that same spirit of cooperation and partnership with you as we move ahead. Speaking of cooperation and partnership, we're, of course, on this great field. We have the new superintendent with us, General. Good to see you. All three of us, Senator Alsobrooks, Congresswoman Alfred, and I, are on the Board of Visitors of the Naval Academy. So in that spirit, let me say, "Go Navy, Beat Army." So to our very soon-to-be next mayor of Annapolis, Jared Littman, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations on being selected to take this baton at this important time in our history. I know you learned from your parents the value of hard work and of giving back to your community, and I know you and your wife Marlene are an essential part of the fabric of this city of Annapolis, including everybody who comes through the family hardware store. And I'm sure that's an opportunity to meet with so many of your constituents. And you've adopted the very important credo, "Listen, Unite, and Do." Very wise words at this time of great division in our country. Indeed, you are taking office at a time when our democracy and our constitution are being tested. The city of Annapolis has been witnessed to earlier times when our country was tested. It was in this great city that General George Washington then surrendered his military commission to the Continental Congress, symbolizing that in America, we submit to the will of the people. And now, as the mayor and the new council custodians of the city where that great example was set, you can show how democracy can deliver a brighter future for all the people of this great city by listening, by uniting, and by doing. Congratulations, all Annapolis.
Our next speaker represents us in Washington, DC, and she is a mover and a shaker. And at the time that we are living in and such trying times, it feels good to have her representation and her voice in Congress. Let's welcome Congresswoman Sarah Alfred.
Thank you so much to Bishop Coats and to my teammates in front of me, the newly-elected city council, our incredible new mayor, and half an hour-ish after all the speakers, Jared get through, to my local and county and state and federal partners, to my colleagues in Washington, Senator Van Hollen and Senator Alsobrooks, our lieutenant governor. You'll hear, and I'm shocked, Senator Van Hollen, you didn't say this term because you said you helped champion, "Team Maryland." You'll hear that term over and over again, and it's more than just our fun nickname for the federal delegation. Team Maryland is about our shared priorities and our shared obligation to face and to confront opportunities and challenges together. And the city council, and Jared, you know this better than most, some of the challenges, like equality, dignified, affordable housing, are decades old. Some, like the impacts of climate change with nuisance flooding and heat islands, are so new and large they can often be too intimidating to approach. Many, like the affordability crisis, too many communities in our country are experiencing or gun violence or ways that we can transform our economy, those are much larger than Annapolis itself. But connecting our communities via 21st century transportation, preserving and communicating our town's unique history with dignity, simply making the trains run on time, that's just a short list of some of the challenges and opportunities all of you have in front of you. But please do not stress for two reasons. One, I offer the guidance of an ancient Jewish text. You are not obligated to complete the work, but neither are you free to abandon it. And second, my advice to this council and our next mayor is that you are not alone. Every elected official sitting behind you is part of Team Maryland. They are part of what is going to help you succeed and confront those challenges together. We are collectively responsible to continuing to earn the trust and the faith of the people that have sent you to this council to represent their interest in our communities, and we are behind you every step of the way. Jared, in what was probably the longest mayoral campaign in the history of our very old city, you demonstrated vision, persistence, and respect for every single voice that you encountered. To the council, you demonstrated the most important values that public servants can embody, the curiosity to learn about the important challenges and opportunities facing your communities, the listening skills and communication skills, not just to hear, but to reflect back those same opportunities and priorities, and frankly, the courage to just put your name on a ballot and raise your hand today. I'm so grateful to have you as teammates in this work. I'm so grateful to call you part of Team Maryland. Congratulations, almost mayor Littman, and almost half an hour away, city council. Welcome to Team Maryland.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Thank you for your remarks, and thank you for your service. We have with us a public servant that represents us here in the state of Maryland. She's boots on the ground, a hard worker, and a advocate for social justice. Let's welcome Senator Shanika Henson.
Congratulations, guys, mayor, council. What you have done is not an easy accomplishment. You have put yourself out there for your entire community to judge, and you have found the confidence of the voters of the city of Annapolis who have selected the nine of you to serve them and reflect their voice. Having served on the Annapolis City Council, I understand that the challenges ahead of you are great, but so are the opportunities that are ahead of you. You get to shape your city in a way that no other level of government gives you the ability to do. You get to have that one-on-one personal connection with your constituents that is unique to serving on the city council. So it certainly is an honor and a privilege to do what you are about to do. In a few minutes, you're going to be asked to raise your hand and swear an oath to the Constitution of the state of Maryland and to the citizens of Annapolis who have given you their trust. And having had the opportunity to work with you all and see you all in action, I'm confident that you'll be able to live up to that standard and live up to that confidence that the citizens have given you. As a native Anapolitan, I believe that this city's greatest strength is also this city's greatest challenge, and that is making sure that all the folks who live in the city of Annapolis feel included in the vision of Annapolis. I believe that is going to be your greatest challenge, but when I look at each of you, I am confident that you all have what it takes to rise to that challenge, to meet that challenge, and to perform that work sacredly. So thank you for putting yourselves out there. Thank you for putting your names on the ballot. Thank you for being willing to serve this city. As the senator said, as the congresswoman said, I'll echo again at the state level, you certainly have the support of myself, of Delegate Beller and Delegate Jones, of our Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller. We will be here to help you along the way and be your greatest champions in all that you do. Congratulations.
Thank you, Senator. In the words of my good friend and colleague, the Honorable Carl Snowden, I want to say this. I want you all to listen to me, and I want you to hear me carefully right now. History is always being made here, and history is not just a reflection of where we've been, but it is an indicator of where we can go. The gentleman I'm about to introduce has been making history here. Just a few weeks ago, history was made again when he offered an apology for slavery here in Annapolis County. Put your hands together and welcome County Executive Stuart Pittman.
This is nice. Up on the screen, look at that. Great choice of a location here at Navy Stadium for Annapolis' inauguration. I want to start by thanking Gavin Buckley, because he paved the way for me. When he came into office in '17, I thought, well, I can do it in '18, flip the city, flip the county, and govern in a way that's a little bit different and brave, and taught me how to be a partner as a county executive to the city of Annapolis. He let me know what was needed, and we stepped up when we could, and I'm looking forward to doing that with our new council and our new mayor. I have one year to do that, and I'm going to do as much as I can. But for the council, I look at this group, and I think, what a wonderful, wonderful diversity of life experiences of people and brain power. I mean, I got to know some of you over the years, and I'll get to know some of you even better, and it's going to be a lively group, I am sure, and you're going to treat your new mayor real well, I'm sure, and you're going to work closely with the county council, with Lisa Rodvin for another year, your county council representative, and with me. But to Jared Littman, I heard about you as an alderman, I heard about you as a lawyer, I heard about you as a businessman. I think I went into your hardware store a couple of times. I probably didn't spend as much money as you would have liked. And then I met you as a dad, whose son can really play soccer. And then I met you as a candidate. And I will say that it's rare to find somebody who has earned a job the way Jared Littman has earned the job of mayor. He came asking questions. He came listening, and it is so appropriate that listening is the first part of his platform. And when I didn't have the answers, then I had to sit him down with my staff, who knew more than I did, about how county government works and the relationship between the city and the county. I then thought about what he would be as mayor, and I'm thrilled that he is going to be the mayor, but I got a couple of letters just this week. One was a resignation that he sent me, resigning from the Anranale Annapolis Resilience Authority, which was disappointing to get. And then he sent me a resignation, resigning from being a citizen's judge on the trial board for our police accountability board. But he didn't do that one until right before inauguration, because he wanted to finish the trial board that he was on, because he wanted to see how police accountability worked. I can't, I can't say how much, or I will say how much, that I am looking forward to working with Jared. The way that I worked with Gavin, it'll probably be a little bit different, might not be quite as much fun. We probably won't get to travel the world together, but we'll do some great work, particularly on the capital projects, particularly on City Dock and the Welcome Center, particularly lobbying arm-in-arm to our state and our federal partners, asking for money together. And hopefully, not quite as much crisis management, but whatever comes our way, I know that you and I will be able to work together on it, our council, your council, and Annapolis and Anranale County are one, and we're very proud that you got elected. Congratulations, all of you.
Thank you, County Executive. This time, we are transitioning into the point of the part of this ceremony that we all have been looking forward to, and that's the swearing-in of our new mayor. This time, we're going to ask if our clerk, Scott Poyea, will come, and we're going to ask if Mayor Jared Littman will come forth.
Thank you, Bishop Coats. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to administer the oath of office this morning, and after the oath of office, I will ask Mayor Littman to sign the test book for Anranale County, everyone who's taken the oath since 1647, an unbroken chain of history since the 1600s. And then after he signs the book, I will then invite the city council to step up for their oath of office. Sir, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jared Littman,
Aye, Jared Littman.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution
And laws thereof
And the laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Mayor of the city of Annapolis
Mayor of the city of Annapolis
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution
And the laws of this state
And the laws of this state
And the charter
And the charter
And the code
And the code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Jared Littman.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I now invite the first four members of the incoming council to join me on the stage, please. And Mr. Huntley, would you join me? Alderman Huntley. Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Harry Huntley.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution
And the laws of this state
And the laws of this state
And the charter and code
And the charter and code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis. Welcome back, Alderman Huntley.
Thank you.
Please stand back. Alderwoman O'Neill, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Karma O'Neill.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
That I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support
And support
The Constitution
The Constitution
And laws thereof
And laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution
And laws of this state
And laws of this state
And the charter and code
And the charter and code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Welcome back, Alderwoman O'Neill.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith Brown, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Keanu Smith Brown.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution
And laws thereof
And laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Alderwoman of the state of, Alderman of the city of Annapolis
Alderman of the city of Annapolis
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution
And laws of this state
And laws of this state
And the charter and code
And the charter and code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Welcome to city government. Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janice Elaine Alsop Johnson.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
That I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution
And laws thereof
And the laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution
And laws of this state
And laws of this state
And the charter and code
And the charter and code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Welcome back, Alderwoman O'Neill.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith Brown, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Keanu Smith Brown.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution
The Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution
And laws thereof
And laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Alderwoman of the state of, Alderman of the city of Annapolis
Alderman of the city of Annapolis
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution
And laws of this state
And laws of this state
And the charter and code
And the charter and code
Of the city of Annapolis
Of the city of Annapolis
Welcome to city government. Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Janice Elaine Alsop Johnson.
Do declare and affirm
Do declare and affirm
That I will support
That I will support
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
That I will be faithful
That I will be faithful
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution
And laws thereof
And laws thereof
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Alderwoman of the city Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis.
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis. Yes, yes, oh Lord, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Lord.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the charter and code.
And the charter and code.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Of the city of Annapolis. I love Annapolis.
Welcome to city government.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Lord.
And the next four of you, join me, please. Will you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, state your name.
I, Brooks Chandlemire.
Do declare and affirm.
Do declare and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the charter and code.
And the charter and code.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Welcome back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will you please raise your right hand and, do you want to switch sides?
No. She should be on outside.
And please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Daisha Sharon Conti.
Do declare and affirm.
Do declare and affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
Support.
Support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful.
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best.
To the best.
Of my skill and judgment.
Of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis.
Alderwoman of the city of Annapolis.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the charter and code.
And the charter and code.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Welcome to city. Rob, will you, Alderman, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, Rob Savage.
Do declare and affirm.
Do declare and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support.
And support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the charter and code.
And the charter and code.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Welcome back to city government. Mr. Thorpe, will you please, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, Frank Thorpe.
Do declare and affirm.
Do declare and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
Alderman of the city of Annapolis.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And the charter and code.
And the charter and code.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Of the city of Annapolis.
Welcome to city government.
Let's give another great big hand for our new council. Just before we call on our newly elected mayor to give his address, we are honored to have yet another voice that represents us here in the state of Maryland. She is our 10th lieutenant governor. Please put your hands together and welcome Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and to the aldermen and women that are here. Thank you so much, we're looking forward to your leadership. And on behalf of Governor Moore and myself, I want to thank each and every one of you that is here, residents of Annapolis, as well as all the elected leaders that are here, from our federal, state, local, and county, thank you so much for the leadership that you provide. We are so appreciative of your partnership and your service. Now, I was supposed to speak a little earlier, so now I'm going to have to change my speech to Mayor like to Mayor Jared Littman. Thank you so much. As you step into this new role, as well as all the Annapolis City Council, you step into your roles, we are reminding that our future is built on the foundation of those who served before us, from our nation's first president to the 137th mayor of Annapolis, Gavin Buckley. Now, Mayor Buckley and I are both immigrants and have had the profound privilege of becoming American, a privilege. It's a great privilege that comes with great opportunity and great responsibility. And Mayor Buckley lived that responsibility and led this city through some of its hardest moments, from the tragic 2018 mass shooting at Capital Gazette, to the long and difficult stretch of COVID-19 pandemic. Mayor Buckley, thank you for your heart and energy that you brought to this city. Annapolis is better because of your leadership. We're grateful to you and your beautiful family, who has anchored you every step of the way, Jules, Millie, Dash, and your furry kids that are rather noisy, I can tell you that. Every time I call them, I hear them in the background. And holding that gratitude, we look ahead to the next chapter and the leader in Annapolis that the people have chosen to guide this city. And that is Mayor Jared Littman. Of course, you all know that he's an engineer, a lawyer, and a small business owner. So Mayor Littman, I'd say you've got your bases covered. Engineers fix problems that people don't even know they have. Lawyers navigate problems and turn even simple questions into billable hours. And hardware store owner, well, that makes, that, they make sure that the rest of us have what we need to fix our own problems. But you're also a husband to Marlene and a dad to two, which means you've mastered the two most essential skills in local government, listening and being held accountable. So Mayor Littman, three pieces of advice I want to offer you. You've got some of the most invested constituents in Maryland, living in this great city, and that is the governor and Maryland's first family. And having them as your neighbors, well, that's a pretty special kind of accountability that you have, just letting you know that. Number two, what happens in Annapolis doesn't stay in Annapolis. It happens to the rest of the state, no pressure. And finally, remember, as Mayor Buckley will tell you, in local government, half the job is fixing the problems, and the other half is trying to convince people that you fixed the problem. So good luck with that. So as we look into this next chapter, on behalf of Governor Moore and myself, congratulations, Mayor Littman, and to your beautiful family, and to the members of the Annapolis City Council, and to your families. Godspeed and thank you.
It is my honor now to present to you the mayor of the city of Annapolis, Mayor Jared Littman, with his inaugural address.
Boy, you know how to make a guy feel good. Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you all so much for being here. The honor, the excitement, the emotion tied to this event is incredible, and so I'm so grateful to share it with all of you here. Congratulations to my colleagues on the city council, Harry, Karma, Keanu, Janice, Brooks, Daisha, Rob, and Frank, you've earned this moment and this honor, and I'm so excited to serve with you. Let's give them another round of applause. The organizers of this fantastic event are Laura Richards and Lindsay Gabel. Can we give it up for them as well? When I launched my campaign in January of 2024, yes, it feels like a lifetime ago, I set out to build a supportive, diverse, inclusive, and effective team, and I think we did it. My friends know that I did not get into this because I love microphones or the attention. I got into it because I care deeply about this city and the people who call it home. And rather than listing the names and risk leaving somebody out, let me simply say thank you to everyone who helped, the volunteers, people who opened the doors when I knocked, people who put up signs in their yards, hosted events for the campaign, donors, and of course the voters, who shared, and plus all of those of you who shared your thoughts and concerns. Thank you. What united us throughout the campaign was simple. We want to focus on what matters most, how we can, together, make Annapolis work better for everyone. I thank the outgoing leaders, including Gavin Buckley, the mayor, whose hard work, charisma, and creative thinking have benefited this city in so many ways, and to the city council members who are not returning, Sheila, Rhonda, Ross, and Dewan. And a big shout out to the city staff who keep Annapolis running every day, and all those who are engaged in civic life. Many thanks to the United States Naval Academy Superintendent, and for allowing us to hold this event here today. Annapolis is grateful to have such incredible partners. And I say this for last, but it comes first in my heart, I would not be here if not for a wonderful and supportive family. To my wife, Marlene, who took over operations of our store so I could campaign and now serve, you're my soulmate and my best friend, thank you. To our children, Zach and Isabel, who supported me at a million events and parades, who did hard work to get me elected, who put up with a cramped schedule that often had me missing dinners and important events in time with you, you inspire me every day. I know that being on the precipice of your adult lives is scary, know that Mom and I are your number one fans, we believe in you, and we appreciate that you do the same for To my mom, my brother, my sister-in-law, my cousins, my in-laws, I'm so glad you're here to share this moment, I'm deeply grateful for your support. And to my dad, who passed away in 2022, too, I miss you, not having you here is hard, but it comforts me to know that you supported my dream. People ask me all the time why I ran for mayor, and I usually say because I love this city, because I've been interested in making the world a better place, or because I can make a difference. And all of that is true, but it's also because of my dad. He was a veteran and a surgeon, and when I was a kid, he would take me on hospital rounds. His specialty was urology, his patients were men, and so their wives would look at me in the eye and say, say, "Your father saved my life." That stayed with me. It planted in me the idea that making a positive difference in someone else's life was a reward worth aspiring to, and that was a belief my mom shared as well. How we serve the community varies from person to person. However, during the campaign, I was reminded of something easy to overlook. We are so much more alike than we are different. We all want to feel safe and self-sufficient. We want our children to be able to play, grow, and be educated. We want to feel that we belong, enjoy our interests, and take pride in our hometown. And so that's how we got here. As your mayor, I will lead with the same values that have guided my work, be prepared, be fair, truly care about everyone who calls home. My job now is to turn those values into a government that works better for all of us. In the past two weeks, I've been in the equivalent of city government boot camp, getting issue briefs, and meeting with all of, and having in-depth conversations with all of the city's directors and chiefs, to frame expectations, share concerns, and to hear them as well. In the weeks ahead, I'll listen to employees, work with the city council to get, set clear goals for how we will serve you, and together, we'll strengthen the way we communicate with residents, so you feel informed, respected, and included in the decisions that shape your future. My goal is a city government that delivers high-quality services in a genuine customer service culture. We'll continue the momentum on big-stakes projects like City Dock and improving public safety. We'll launch an initiative to streamline permitting, and where, and who here can guess the top issue that I heard throughout the campaign? Parking, of course. Thank you. We'll get to issues like parking and public safety that are important to you. In today's world, when so much of the public conversation happens online, we've all seen we've all seen frustration spill over. Those feelings are real and they deserve to be heard. My hope is that we, as a city, can speak to one another with civility and respect, even when we disagree. We live in a time where it's easy to focus on what's going wrong, but we also need space to see what's going right. Annapolis has enormous strengths. We live in a beautiful, historic maritime city, filled with renowned restaurants, arts, and culture. We are America's sailing capital. We have the Naval Academy and St. John's College. We have a diverse and engaged population, easy access to parks, waterways, and bike paths, and we're within a short distance to mountains and the beaches. We have more music, festivals, and performances than anyone could possibly attend. We have dedicated staff, passionate volunteers, residents who care deeply about the future of our city. Let's appreciate everyone who makes Annapolis work, and let's work together across neighborhoods, ages, backgrounds, and viewpoints to share our next future, because that is what it will take, all of us working together. We face major challenges ahead, but some unlike, and some unlike anything the city has seen before. But Annapolis has always risen to meet the moment. We do it by showing up for one another, by listening, by caring, and remembering we are one community. And that's a driving theme of my administration: Annapolis works. We've got a lot of work to do, but Annapolis works best when we work together. We share a common goal, a government that works smoothly and efficiently for everyone, employees and residents alike. By the time you get to a permit desk or to reserve, to reserve a field for your team, the city employee helping you will have relied on supervisors and colleagues, HR, finance, legal, IT, the parts of city government that the public seldom sees. A strong, well-run city depends on all the systems working well together. We are a small but significant city, so I'm grateful for our federal, county, and state leaders who are here today and who both work with us and bring resources to make Annapolis work for you. That's a commitment for the money part. And together, we will strive to make Annapolis work for every neighborhood and every resident, not just in the moments of celebration, but in the daily work of serving our community with honesty, compassion, and purpose. Annapolis works best when we all try to make a positive difference in someone else's life, that lesson I learned as a kid. Annapolis is all of ours, so speak up, get involved, join a city board or commission, volunteer, help with cleanup efforts such as the Save Our Trees efforts, find a purpose, and jump in. This is my call to action. So let us begin this new chapter of a shared government for the city we all love, a future that we build together, because when we work together, Annapolis works. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a native Anapolitan, I can speak, I'm sure, for many of you, that Annapolis is a very unique town. It's a very unique town that's full of art, culture, and history, and storytelling. And to honor that spirit, please put your hands together and welcome our poet laureate, Jeff Holland.
Thank you. It's a distinct honor to be here. I know, Mr. Mayor, that the job you're getting yourself into is not an easy one. And I know this because not long ago, I was at the doggy park at Quiet Waters Park with my dog, Millie. You all know Millie. And there was former Mayor Dick Hillman with his two rescue greyhounds. And one of the greyhounds went off to the corner to do his business, and Dick pulled out a doggy bag and said, "This is what it's like being mayor." Another time, I had the privilege of joining former, or mayor Dean Johnson at the time. This is 1999. We were celebrating the 350th celebration of Annapolis in Anarundale County. And part of the celebration was going up to Groton, Connecticut, and adopting a nuclear submarine, the USS Annapolis. And part of the, part of the fun was we got a submarine ride down the Atlantic coast and up the Chesapeake Bay to Annapolis. And as we were leaving Groton and heading, entering into the Atlantic Ocean and diving down, Dean and I were in the conning tower and watching the screen on the periscope, and the water was going up, up, up. And finally, we were underwater, and Dean went, "Whew." And I said, "What?" "Well, the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting right now, and they'll never find me here." As I was looking for inspiration for today's event, I was searching through my favorite book, Jane McWilliams' History of Annapolis, Annapolis City on the Severn. And I noted that the old Ironsides, the USS Constitution, was serving in 1860 as a training ship for the new Naval Academy at the time. But the problem was, it was very deep keel, and the harbor of Annapolis wasn't as deep as the keel on the, on the frigate. So the frigate was kind of stuck in the mud. And I thought, "The Constitution's stuck in the mud." Nah, too allegorical. So I went back to Senator Van Hollen's story about something that happened in that building you might see over my shoulder. It's not that far away, the State House in 1783. So it was a Christmas to remember way back in December of 1783. "The Revolution won. A whole new world begun. And we called that world the land of the free. The big houses blazed in those glorious days with candles and fiddles and laughter. And we wandered the streets begging wassels and sweets with our caroling trailing off after. And along that procession, we passed Congress in session, the State House in the circle on the hill, though the congressmen in question were more readily in session at Mann's Tavern, a quaff in their swill. They had ratified the Treaty of Paris and now were seeking to reward the man who had made the dream come true. He was coming into town to step up and then step down. He was the greatest man we ever knew. With fifes and drums abetted, we all went out to greet him as he came toward town along the General's Road. And George, he looked so proud as we gathered all around. And he sighed like he'd set down a heavy load. On that day, Washington could have had his own kingdom with a wave of a sword and a nod. We'd have made him our king gladly. Instead, he stood there sadly and said goodbye to us unruly mob. And afterwards, at Mann's, the general shook hands with a tearful group of old comrades in arms. They had followed him around from New York to Yorktown, but they couldn't follow now back to the farm. And that evening, the general danced the ladies. General loved to dance at the ball. He danced until dawn, danced with each one by one, till he danced, till he danced with them all. And then he departed for Christmas with Martha, not knowing what fate would decree. But thanks to him, we had more to be thankful for, that Christmas in Annapolis in 1783." Now imagine the magnitude of that moment. He'd just defeated the most powerful army in the world, and yet he seceded all the power he'd controlled, cementing for the eons that the nation would be ruled by the word of law and not the petty whims of one who had so many people fooled, governed by the rule of "we, the people," not tyrants, oligarchs, or tycoons. Let Annapolis show the world how democracy is done, with justice, not with vengeance, with truth, not outright lies, with good sense and consensus, with facts, not alibis, with idealism, not idolatry, with compassion, not derision, with intelligence, not idiocy, with communion, not division. On this December day, let us rededicate yourselves to the ideals set by Washington here in this place, in this city, in this Annapolis. God bless our new mayor and our city council. God bless Anarundale County. God bless the state of Maryland, and... God bless America. Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff Holland. This is the conclusion of today's ceremony. And we want to thank each and every one of you that have been here today to take part. We offer our sincere gratitude to all of our participants, supporters, and those who have attended. We want to announce that the reception will be held at 4:00 PM. We are a little ahead of schedule, so you have time to take pictures and to greet our new elected officials. And we want to ask this, as we transition, we kindly ask those without reception tickets to exit through the front of the venue, please. And thank you again for sharing this special day with us. I had to make sure I may know where they want you to go, right? Thank you so much. Would everyone stand at this time? This is something that has become like a tradition here in Annapolis. And that is our honorable friend, Mr. Carl Snowden, says that you ought to look at someone next to you on either side. Look them in the eye and tell them I love you. Have a wonderful day, everyone. Thank you.